Dean Smith, Kendall Sneed, we have Trish Wackerly and Councilmember Laura Makowski. Okay, so we have several events throughout the year. We have February Think Spring. We also have the May Ferndale Plant Exchange, which Dominic spearheads, puts a lot of effort into that, and so does Michael. The June Beautification Awards, the Coneflower Awards, the August Beautification Awards, October Bootification Awards in the Holiday Light Awards. So, we can just go through a little bit and then explain a few of these. Once a year, we do the plant exchange, and Michael from the city also has coordinated, it's during the recycling event. So, that's where you can bring a plant, exchange a plant, and take a plant, and it's a great opportunity to meet neighbors and clean up your yard of the plants you don't want. Now, we have the Beautification and the Coneflower Award, and I'm not going to name off all the winners, but you know, every year we do Beautification Awards, and the only way you're going to get nominated is you have to go to the city website and be nominated. So, I want to encourage people to participate and nominate your neighbors. I think you can even nominate yourself, so, and win an award, and it's kind of exciting to get one. Now, the Bootification, this is one of my favorite ones. We do, this is the Halloween Bootification Awards, and it's very competitive. I'd have to say the Southwest is one of the best, very competitive. People are very competitive, and it's a lot of fun. So, that's one of my favorite ones. And then we also have the Holiday Light Awards, where you can nominate your neighbor or yourself for beautiful Holiday Lights awards. And then we also, yes, this is where you can go to get yourself nominated, or nominate one of your neighbors for the Beautification Awards, and we will post that on the social media. And I do want to say that Suzanne does a great job of our social media as well, so we have to give her our thanks for that as well. So, thank you.
And I encourage people to like the Facebook page.
Thank you. For your annual presentation, all of our boards do annual updates on their accomplishments and what they're doing next, and I really appreciate it for you all being here. And then next up is for B, which is the Nomo May Follow-Up Presentation. Hi Claire.
Hi, good evening.
This is Claire, our Zero Waste Coordinator.
Right, yeah, you heard it. I am Claire, the Zero Waste Coordinator for the City of Ferndale here. Good evening, I'm excited to be back here tonight with the follow-up on how our Nomo May program went, which was brand new to the city this year. So, first off, while I am here, I just wanted to provide an update on Ferndale's status as a Michigan Green community. Ferndale has received gold again this year for our leadership in the efforts for climate resiliency for the second year in a row. So, this is really exciting. It definitely takes a village to prioritize sustainability, so if I haven't said it enough already, thank you guys so much for your continued support and innovation when it comes to sustainability. So, I'm excited to throw this update in here this evening, even though it's not the overall purpose of the presentation. All right, so, to get into the Nomo May content. So, when I brought this concept of Nomo May to you all in February, I focused a lot on the benefits and the actual mechanics of the program, and today I'm going to talk about what we did to roll this out and how it went. So, just a bit of a recap, Nomo May as a concept, it's a conservation initiative that encourages folks to either stop mowing their lawn or to mow less frequently during the month of May. And this can help create habitat and food resources for our early season pollinators, for bees and other pollinators as well. We see, we can see a reduction of emissions from our fossil fuel-based lawn mowers, as well as, you know, have additional leisure time to help introduce or incorporate native plants into a landscape. So, this program was supported through the city by delaying the enforcement of the Grass and Weeds Ordinance to June 1st. So, traditionally, we begin this on May 1st, and this year it was pushed back to June 1st for the first time. So, when we were thinking about implementation, we really wanted to learn a lot about this concept and this program to help kind of anticipate questions or concerns that might come from residents. So, put a brief timeline here, just of like the course of action to put all of this information together, because even though it's a small program, it has definitely taken its journey. So, we really wanted to focus and prioritize communication, registration, and education. It fits together so perfectly. So, in January, we began the program research, started to learn from other communities who have done this program before. In February, we brought our resolution to council to officially pass and delay the ordinance date to start. In March, we started building our communications plan and wanted to understand how we could incorporate and incorporate this, you know, program into communications that were already occurring. In April, we really just focused on sharing the information out as widely as we could. In May, we spent time educating residents on the benefits of this program, as well as trying to share additional programming through the city. We really highlight, tried to highlight the Planned Natural Landscape Program as a connection point to Nomo May. And now that we're in June, we're starting to work on cleanup and understand and analyze, you know, how things went, what we could do better for next time, and, and kind of build a list of recommendations, which is what I'm bringing forth to you today. So, like I mentioned, our communications plan, we wanted to try to reach as many residents as we could, because this is a brand new program, and it's something that, you know, city council was so passionate about. We wanted to make sure it reached as many residents as possible. So, we put the information everywhere we could think, the print newsletter, we made a news story for our website, we made social media posts, and we were also picked up by a few local TV networks. So, it was fun to be able to do those interviews and kind of share, share our program out to, you know, to Southeast Michigan. So, we really focused on pairing education at every opportunity that we could with promoting the program, really tying it back to the benefits, tying it back to the why, you know, climate resiliency, supporting local pollinators and local wildlife, as well as sharing the opportunity of how benefits like this can be continued on even beyond May, but throughout the rest of the summer and even all year by planning a natural landscape and incorporating native plants into your yard. So, we really tried to pair these two concepts together in every opportunity. And this image here is actually the lawn sign that we created to distribute out to the registered residents that were interested in supporting the program. So, it was really cool to see those throughout the community. So, to talk a little bit about feedback that we've heard from residents, as well as some numbers associated with the program, we saw, based on our social media analytics, that we had a really huge reach from our Facebook and Instagram posts, which was really exciting to see. I think it was fun that, you know, it's a new program, so we draw, were able to capture a new audience, but then still bring it back to even some existing programs that we already have that might not be as well-known. So, it was a great opportunity to, to work on both things. We got really great positive feedback on the educational materials that were sent out through the registration process. So, we collected over 700 registrations, 700 households, heard about the program, and wanted to participate enough to formally register online. And about halfway through the month, we sent out a reminder, as well as loads of education and recommendations on how to mow your grass when it's gotten really tall, because I think people were really excited to participate, and they might have forgotten that aspect of it. Oh, by the end of the month, what am I going to do? You know, there's, there's a lot going on here. So, we really tried to help people along by providing that education. We had 100 pieces of signage that we originally created, and we ran out even before the first half of the month. So, that was exciting to see. People were really excited to pick up that sign and, and display it in their yard. We also had 15 Planned Natural Landscapes that were created and registered with the city throughout the city throughout the months of April and May, so that was really great to see. And we also, based on our See Click Fix submissions, this kind of tracks residential concerns about unkept lawns and things of that nature. We had nine submissions from the months of April and May, and this was actually really similar to previous years, so I found that to be really interesting. We didn't really have a huge uptake or anything like that. Let's see. Okay. So, my final thoughts, in... I... based on recommendations, based on feedback from both staff that worked really hard to put this program together, as well as residents that were really excited to participate, they want us to continue the program. They're really excited about the benefits and about the opportunity to use May as a month to provide education about plantings and pollinators and kind of use it as a method and an opportunity to reach residents. They want us to make more signage, so that we have more signage available to those that are interested in showing their support. Some of our staff recommended to place parameters around commercial and vacant properties, just to help on the staff-capacity side of things, whether we, you know, require registration for these particular instances, things like that. That's something that we might want to think about when next year rolls around. And the last recommendation is just to partner with local organizations and even with our own commissions as much as we can to help... to help just support the program education, you know, whether this be to create events or to create materials. Throughout the months of April and May, this could be through native planting workshops to help people understand maybe how they could plant a rain garden or a pollinator-friendly garden. I've even seen other communities have like a workshop or a Q&amp;A with electric lawn equipment, so people can come and learn about it and try it out, and, you know, the possibilities are endless on the education front. So, that's our focus. You know, if we're to continue this again next year, we'll have the same key points, the communication, the registration, the education, but provide those resources to help people, you know, even thrive even more. All right, that's all I have for you this evening. Again, I just... I'm pretty proud of the collaboration through all the different departments and staff to make this program a success, and, yeah, CED, Communications, DPW, all did a really wonderful job communicating and supporting this initiative, so I'm excited to see how it grows over time.
Thanks, Claire, and thanks for everybody who participated.
Yeah, really large participation, more than three times than what we were expecting, so.
All right. Folks, we're going to move on the agenda to call the audience, where we set around a half hour for people to come up and have three minutes to say what's ever on their mind. So, I'm going to invite someone to start the process. Kara will be mindful with the clock to help you stay on track. And remember, we do the discourse with dignity here and trying to make it a comfortable, welcoming place, because sometimes people are here for the first time and they're not used to public speaking, and we want them to feel welcome and that they have a space here to share what is on their mind. All right, who would like to start us off? Thanks, Sharon.
I have a question. Go ahead first.
Hi, I'm Sharon Chess, President of the Ferndale Community Concert Band, and we have a concert coming up. We're working with the Ferndale Parks and Rec Department, presenting our very first outdoor concert here in Martin Road Park on June 25th at 3:00. The concert will be free. We're working with some other entities. We're hoping Parks and Rec is hoping to align some food trucks to come in. Our whole band will be there, so there'll be like 55 musicians. We have the Detroit Motor City Pipe and Drum Corps that will be joining us for a particular piece of music that we're playing. Four of our musicians, including Mr. Tim Burke, who's the band teacher in the middle school over at Ferndale Middle School, will be directing a piece of music. We're excited for this to happen, and we're looking forward to making this an annual event. It's a place where you can bring your entire family, have a picnic lunch that afternoon, bring your chairs and your blankets. No alcohol is allowed because it's on public property, but we're really looking forward. And if the weather is not cooperative, our normal concerts are held in the Ferndale High School Auditorium at 3:00 in the afternoon, so that's exactly what we will do. We will still have that same concert, but it will be held in the auditorium at the high school at 3:00. So, we're looking forward to working with Parks and Rec. We're still working out some of the finer details of this, but restrooms will be available inside the Curling Center, and as I said, parking and food trucks and stuff are all in the area. So, please put June 25th on your calendar at 3:00, Martin Road Park, at 1615 East Lewiston. Thank you very much.
I'm Dominic Scapatici. I'm going to speak on behalf of Ferndale Garden Club. Probably most people know me from that. Ferndale Garden Club has been around in the community since 1931. We're still going strong. I just want to let the community know, last week, on Thursday, we awarded our annual scholarship to a graduating Ferndale High School student. We fundraised $1,000, and the recipient was Sophia Rewald, so that was just a wonderful thing that happened in our community. I just wanted to share that. And also, keep an eye out, we've been doing summer programs with Parks and Rec at Harding Park, so our next one is coming up the second Thursday in July, and it's for the public, free, and the topic is designing with native plants. So, if you're trying to get your registered natural landscape and don't know what to do, so it doesn't look like an overgrown jungle, this would be for you. And then also, we're doing quarterly programs with the library, so that one, our next one is coming up in August. Sign up in the library now, because it's a class or workshop on growing your own herbal tea garden, so I think that one will fill up pretty fast. And the presenter is a local businesswoman here in Ferndale, Rachel Carter, so it's another chance, too, to meet someone who has a garden business in Ferndale, but just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a lot of people in this audience. I've just... there's got to be more people. Hi there.
Hi. Jeff Smith, speaking on behalf of Genevieve Smith. Is that Mr. Krist? Are you certain? I see you again. I have one question. I haven't been following the neighborhood zoning... I don't know what you call it, no... neighborhood... I can't think of the name right now. Where you reduce the taxes for the apartment building going in on Vester. Has the city... have you come up with... do you have any restrictions on planning commissioners or council that you cannot take up residence in things that you vote on, such as the apartment building? I'm just curious if you have... if you've come up with any restrict... any restricts anybody here? No? So, you could possibly pass this thing, build this thing, and then take up residence in that building, is that correct? As a council member?
As a rent payer person?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Do you believe that's a conflict of interest at all?
We're not here to comment on that tonight.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm not going to get into it. I'm just... I'm just asking. It just seems like there's just a lot of focus on trying to get this thing, you know, going, and there's a lot of people who are objecting to it, so.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Rafino Valentine, owner of Valentine Distilling and a resident in Ferndale for over a decade. I'm here to talk about 141 and what it's going to do to our business. This is a business that I've spent the majority of my adult life building. I've been a cheerleader for the city. We've been there at least 12 years, helping to build this downtown. 141 is going to take all of our parking. Parking means customers. Customers mean staying in business or going out of business. And the thought of using my own tax dollars to put me out of business is just absolutely appalling. I did a... in about an hour or a couple hours, we got over 2,000 signatures on a petition against 141, against giving them tax money, against the development in general. 2,000 signatures in a couple hours. In addition to spending tax incentives on 141, the city, for decades, which has been in a surplus, is now going to be facing a deficit. So, to me, this would be absolutely the wrong time to spend money on millionaire developers. There's a saying that everybody knows, "When you're in a hole, stop digging." Don't spend money that the city doesn't have on a development that is going to put businesses that helped build the city out of business. So, don't spend money, and don't do the business. Don't... don't take our parking unless you replace it somewhere.
All right, see no one else. I'm going to close call the audience, and we're going to our public hearing, which is 6A, which is consideration of a special land use application for 22132 Woodward. We have four steps in a public hearing, which is, one, is the presentation from the staff and the applicant. Step two is we open it up for public comment on that item. Step three is we hand it back over to council for questions of fact-finding, and then step four is we need to go to a motion to discuss and debate. So, let's kick off step one, which is a presentation by our Community and Economic Development Director. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. All right, as the mayor mentioned, this is a public hearing for 22132 Woodward. Staff has a very small presentation. This is a former subway that's been vacant for two years. The applicant came to staff a while ago asking to convert the vacant building into a Caribou Coffee that's re-entering the marketplace. You may be familiar, Caribou used to be within the market a long time ago, then left the market, and now they're on expansion plan back into the market that the architect can speak of. There were two applications before the planning commission. One was a site plan that was approved 7 to 1, and then one is a special land use for the outdoor patio and drive-through. The main concern for me was queuing onto Woodward, so we had the applicant work with MDOT on a traffic study. MDOT's requirements are there is stacking for 400 linear feet. They do propose a double drive-through. That fits about 16 vehicles or so. That passed MDOT standard, and MDOT is signing off on the permit. The next question for staff is how does that affect the adjacent side street as people are exiting? We required a supplemental traffic study on that, and that traffic study showed that there was not concerns of any stacking, that there's enough pulsating on Woodward that the cars can exit or go east on the side street. We talked with MDOT on that and the architect. Before you say is the special land use for the drive-through and the patio. That did pass by Planning Commission with a recommendation of 8 to 0. So, that's staff's presentation on the development. The applicant is here, Jeffrey Parker with Jeffrey Parker Architects, and he can answer any questions you may have.
Hi, my name is Jeff Parker, and I'm the architect for this project. We're also the development manager for Caribou Coffee. Caribou Coffee is owned by the same people that have Panera Bread, so it's all part of that same family. We're looking to bring Caribou Coffee back to Michigan through a franchise owner that has the Panera Breads, and this will be one of... the first one of about 55 coming to Michigan. So, anyway, we're happy to be here tonight. We're taking... we're intending to take the subway site, which is not such a nice site to look at right now, but really fix it up. We're going to redo the parking lot, cut out a lot of the parking lot and put in landscaping, paint the building, and redo the building a little bit. But overall, Caribou is a kind of a high-end coffee. There's no dining on the inside. It's intended to be for drive-through and patio. One of the things we did, based on the planning commission's input, which we thought was a good idea, is to take the patio from putting it kind of in an island in the parking lot, but tucking it right up next to the sidewalk, the public sidewalk, so when people want to grab a cup of coffee, there's a nice spot to sit and watch the traffic go by and have some plants around. So, anyway, we're excited to be here. We thought that the subway had permission to have a patio from before, but it sounds like they might have done something under the radar back at that time, and we're looking to... right now, it's on the backside. We're looking to put it in a more prominent spot where we can have some umbrella tables and so forth. And then, in terms of the drive-through, we worked extensively with MDOT to make sure that they were comfortable with how our traffic might pan out. We think we're not going to have nearly that much traffic as what they're thinking, but they said that they've learned some lessons from subway that went in a bit down the street that's caused backups out onto the road, onto the highway, and so they want to make sure that didn't happen here. So, anyway, we've been collaborating with everybody, and we think we have something that'll work well for Caribou and the community. So, if you have any questions, I'm here, and otherwise, I think that's about all I have.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up for the public hearing now, and we'll hear from our residents. So, I'm opening up the public hearing on the special land use application for 22132 Woodward at 7:40. Is there anybody here who would like to make comments about this item? Come on up, Nadir, and have your say.
So, I'm a resident on University Street, which is the side street there. So, what kind of traffic are you expecting to come through that will then feed on to University? You have a follow-up? Perfect.
Thank you.
So, following up on the...
You're looking for page three of the Planning Commission meeting minutes, where the conditions for...
Is one of the conditions a no... a left turn only?
Yeah, number... condition number four was a left turn only onto University sign will be included on the final plan.
Yeah, so I correct myself. I said some vehicles could go left or right. There's a no right or left turn only, so you can't go down University. You have to go back to Woodward and get on Woodward.
Is there anybody else who'd like to make, is there anybody else who'd like to make public comment? Come on.
Hi, this is more of an observation. Today, when I was coming down Woodward, I realized that we have a new specialty coffee shop going in right there at the corner of Woodward and Nine Mile on Southeast Side. And then you have Dunkin' Donuts on the West Side. And now a third coffee shop, all within like an eighth of a mile of one another. So it kind of seems an odd place to put a third coffee shop. Although I love Caribou because I know when they used to be here, they had the public entertainment area where you could do poetry, reading, storytelling, a little bit of, you know, music kind of thing. So I encourage Caribou to come, but to have three coffee shops in such a short period, short space, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Thanks, Sharon. Is there anybody else? All right, I'm going to now bring it back to council. If there's any questions for Roger or the applicant, please. I opened it up to council members to pick that off. Who'd like to start?
Well, through, through the chair.
Would you like to mention what your, because you're on the planning commission?
Sure, sure. So because I'm on the planning commission, I have very few questions, and in fact, I have none. So one of the biggest concerns was the issue of parking, of vehicles backing up onto Woodward. As the applicant mentioned, he mentioned subway, we were actually talking about Starbucks, which is in Royal Oak, which if you've ever traveled up near 13 Mile, you have found four or five cars sitting onto Woodward, blocking that, that very right lane. And that's what MDOT has taken into consideration, is making sure that there's a lot more stacking of vehicles in the driveway, which they required a double, a double drive-through, which that Starbucks does not have. I will take credit, I'm the one that suggested that the patio be moved closer to Woodward for a couple of reasons. One, because I just think it's more attractive if you're walking down Woodward to see, you know, that type of space where there's patios, chairs, flowers, as opposed to a handicap space. The other issue I had was the, anybody parking in that very first space is going to be backing out onto the sidewalk. So if you move everything further down, that parking space, which is a handicap space, would be actually closer to the service window. It is a, a drive-through and pickup window only, there's no interior, so that's why there's very limited parking spaces, which meets our, our code. And I, I just think it's going to be a really great addition to that area, which has kind of been inactive for several years when Subway and Tim Hortons closed down. That whole couple of block area has kind of been very, very inactive, so. But yeah, I, that's pretty much was the concern, was the, the parking. I'm sorry, the, the vehicle stacking up on Woodward, which I guess you could call parking.
Through the chair, and I don't know who's better poised to do this, Roger or the applicant. One, can you confirm that there is a walk-up window? And two, can you sort of point out the pedestrian path to the walk-up window? I'm struggling to find it in the drawing.
Sure. The walk-up window and the pedestrian path.
Yeah, there, there is a walk-up window, and on this drawing that you're looking at, it's where the patio is shown there, it's on the left side of that, at, right at the, in the wall. So kind of on the center of the wall facing, facing the parking lot. And the, the patio that you see there is shifted all the way to the left now, and the handicap parking spot is to the left of that. So between the handicap parking spaces and the area that is adjacent to it and the patio, that space is kind of wide open to easily get to that pickup window. It's kind of like a window what you'd have at an ice cream store. Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Through, through the chair. Councilwoman, sorry, Mayor Protam, if you look at page seven of this document at the very end, you'll see some renderings that show where the pickup window is. Today, it is just a window that they plan to, to transfer or convert into...
I see.
A sliding window.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right here.
Gotcha.
Again, that's why I thought it was important to move the handicap parking over. And I believe we also requested that it be grade level so that there's no curb or ramp. Everything's going to be on one single level, so there's no having to go up any kind of ramp or anything to get to that, that patio.
This is for the applicant? I'm guessing I probably know the answer to this question, but I was wondering, what are some of your peak service times that Caribou relies on for a drive-through like this?
Yeah, the, the peak time is when people are on their way to work in the morning, so probably 6:30 to 8:00, and then things taper down after that through the rest of the day.
Okay.
It's a short answer.
So is your peak time, the double driveway here is just for peak time only?
Yeah, it would likely, we, we have that. It'll be fully functional and operate really smoothly when there's a lot of traffic coming through or during those peak times. But when things taper off, that outside lane would be closed and it would just be the inside lane.
If I may, through the chair. We've seen those kind of dual drive-throughs before in restaurants, so I'm asking, and you may have mentioned it when I saw you at the planning commission, but I just need a recap here. Are we going to, are you going to depend on human error to say, okay, I'll stop so this car can go, and then I'll go? It's going to be alternating cars? Or how, how are you going to control that as they're going out onto University?
As they're going out into University?
Yes.
Well, as they're at the service window, I mean, as someone who goes to drive-throughs often, you come up to the service window and the person inside usually will service one or the other. Sometimes you'll have two people if they have two POS systems going back and forth. And then as you queue up, most of the time, there's someone in front of another person, so you know just naturally who's getting in line, so it goes back to the first. Sometimes both get their orders at the same time, get thank you at the same time and pull forward, and then they have to figure it out. Most systems identify your car, so the person at the POS system knows by your car, gray SUV, it says it on their POS system. Once you're back in line getting your drink, it's just one car out onto University. If that makes sense. You come in at one, you go to two, you go back to one, and you're out.
So you merge before you get to the window and...
Yeah.
...one person out each time?
Yeah, you merge right after the window, or the order box, you merge back into one. If we look at the site plan, you can see... So you're probably ordering, what, right here? And then you're pulling forward, merging back into one. So by the time you're the second, third car, you're just the one vehicle back in line. Then when you pull out into University, there's only room really for one car. When that's closed, if people were driving around, one could slide out, but generally, this car is pulling out left and it's just pulsating at one car per turn.
Through the chair. And just to clarify, the study that was done, because there were two parking studies, one on Woodward and one on University, and the one on University did take into consideration if the light is red going onto Woodward, you're going to have so many cars backing up at 7:00 AM, and you're going to have cars pulling out of the driveway, that there was enough timing with the lights so that you don't have 12 cars backed up on University, therefore all of this backup traffic into the driveway.
Yeah, so it looked at the, I can't remember the numbers, but it looked like, looked at the traffic leaving University going westbound. I can't remember the numbers, but it actually was relatively small. In a half-hour period, it may have been four cars, three cars, it just was not as much as I thought it would be. So the traffic from the residential coming out there isn't significant. The, the cars leaving the service line, I think it was about one per two minutes, maybe even a little bit more, one per 220, which would be enough time if two or three vehicles were on University, then a light south of there would stop red. You could maybe able to break traffic at any point, but if it stops red, then you definitely had your time to come out. So we were looking at all that.
Thank you.
If I may, I have a question for Councilman Pollica and/or Roger, and it's a hard question. How many times is the drive-through mentioned in our master plan? Where is it stated in our master plan that we seek to add more drive-throughs in our city?
We, we don't. This is existing use.
Yes, but it's a special land use permit, so it still is required to come to council. I did a search in our master plan and it shows up once, and it's in the grid of future land use place types as a special land use. So what this says to me is that our residents haven't said, please build more drive-throughs, rather than it says, it is an existing use, but it's not a land use type that our residents have asked for since we've just updated the master plan. So that's one thing that I looked at. The second question I have is because we're putting the new bike lanes and pedestrian-focused design on Woodward, which is a rethink of how Woodward is being used, has any thought been into the pedestrian experience with all those cars speeding in, in the morning, and as well as there's a bus stop nearby, right across the street, right there? So people are going to be walking to the bus and navigating a lot of car traffic in the morning and potentially in the evening. And so I just see a lot of potential conflict here that our residents have said it wasn't a land use that they specifically wanted and called out in our master land use plan as something that we should be planning for.
Sure, so I think that would be a great observation, that people usually in today's day are not pro-drive-through. It is a state highway which leads itself to drive-throughs, but generally, I don't think the, I don't think people enjoy it anymore. I think Dan could speak to what are the special use review criteria. I know there's some criteria in there, but as we go through the code rewrite, we may be rethinking those types of uses in the city. If this was later and that was already done, maybe it would not be allowed on Woodward or bigger buffers between other drive-throughs or something. But I think as it stands today, the current code would reasonably allow...
Allowed with council vote of a special land use permit.
A second.
It's allowed only with the special land use approval from council.
It is, and I think the criteria for a special land use, I'd have to pull up the code, are pretty specific on, on when you can approve and deny. So you'd have, you'd have to look at the criteria to say whether or not this meets those criteria. And I think Dan could probably answer that technically better.
Well, through the chair, there, there are conditions that's referenced. I'm going to give you those conditions are that are referenced in... While you're doing that, I can answer your question about the, the bike lanes. So I originally had a very, very much disagreement with the, the developer at the planning commission, where I had concerns that the backup parking was going to go into the bike lanes, because there's parking currently along a couple of those spaces. And what MDOT has done is actually removed those spaces, but did not put the, the bike lanes into that, that incut. It's actually going in the current lane, so that's all going to be dead space, all of that along the, the sidewalk there. That is not going to be bike lane. The bike lane is actually going to be in the complete right lane. Right now, there's a number of parking spaces, but for whatever reason, MDOT deemed it to not even put the parking in there. So if, if parking does back up, it could back up along that, that dead zone instead of the bike lanes. But yeah, I did address, I was concerned about the bike lanes being impacted as well. My other concern too was, and I understand the additional, you know, the double stacking of the driveway, but the driveway is already permitted on this property. It's had a driveway with subway for, for years. Another developer could come in and put, you know, a Jimmy John's there and have indoor seating and not have a double drive-through and just have the single drive-through. So my, you know, my thought is have something that is at least, for the most part, you know, permissible use today, with the one exception of the double drive-through, or have it vacant for a number more years. No, I don't know...
Or a different design there, or a different building footprint altogether.
If you get someone who's going to purchase the property to demolish the building. And going back to Mrs. Chess's comment of, you know, there's three coffee places, you know, that's, that's, you know, capitalism, survival of the fittest. They're either going to succeed or they're, you know, after a couple of years, they're gone as well.
Through the chair, wholly unrelated to parking or drive-through, I have a question about the dumpster. So I noticed that the, the doors to the dumpster have been relocated to the alley. Can you tell me a little bit about the decision-making behind that process? And would the workers from the Caribou Coffee access the, the dumpster from the alley, or do they have an opening in the lot as well?
So I was absent from the planning commission meeting. Kyle was there. Kyle's out today. I think Councilor Pollica or the applicant could talk about that. I know that that came up from one commissioner to move the loading and unloading of the trash to the alley.
Yes, Commissioner Hagsforth was, it was very much of interest to him. His concern of having it on the alley was, you know, in the morning, having it, you know, bang, bang, you know, waking up people. And, and I have to be honest, I, I don't remember what the final decision was. There was conversation regarding the movement of the trash can back into the lot so that the vehicle, the, the trash, garbage truck could actually pull into the lot and access it. I think that was going to be something that you were going to be looking at, talking to the developer to see if that was possible, and I don't know if, if you've had that opportunity. It was one of the reasons, I believe, that Hagsforth, Commissioner Hagsforth voted no on the, on the site plan, yes. So condition number six, applicant will work with staff to redesign the trash pickup approach to enable direct truck pickup on-site if possible.
So we had a, a trash hauler look at that, and they would not pick it up staying within the subway property or within this parcel, because they thought there was too much risk. They'd have to do a lot of backing up and create an unsafe scenario. So they, so we're leaving it as it stands, coming through the alley, that's how they service the dumpster that's next door, just down from this to the south of this. But the access to subway would be from a gate that's on, on the Caribou side.
Oh, good, okay. Oh, good. Okay.
Through the chair, I, I do understand Commissioner Hagsforth's concern about, you know, the, the loudness of, of a trash can being banged into a garbage truck, but I don't think the sound is going to be any different if the truck's on this side of the parking lot or in the alley. It's, it's right there, you know? It's up in the air. It's, you know, being dumped in. I, I don't think the residents are going to be any less affected by the truck going into the parking lot as opposed to the alley. It's just my personal opinion.
Through the chair, just in response to the, the zoning ordinance 24-273, has six conditions that the Planning Commission and Council are to evaluate in considering an application for a special land use. Those were considered by the Planning Commission in its recommendation, voted by the Planning Commission on the special land use. Application was eight, zero. I can read those for you, should we wish them it's, that there's, there's six criteria that are to be evaluated. The first one is whether or not the proposed special land use backs from rural roads, or economic viability of any residential of this area, 500 feet of the proposed use, E, be designed, constructed, and operated and maintained, and the character of the general vicinity, potential character of the area. The site design of the proposed special land use shall minimize the impact of site activity on the properties and determine whether this requirement has been met. Consideration shall be taken. One, the location and screening of vehicles, parking areas in relation to the surrounding development. Two, the location and screening of outdoor stores, work areas and mechanical equipment in relation to the surrounding development. Three, the hours of operation of the proposed use. Approval of the special land use may be conditioned upon operation of the proposed use. Considered appropriate to ensure minimal impact on surrounding uses. Four, the bulk placement and materials, construction of the proposed use in relation to the surrounding environment. Five, the impact of parking on traffic on the surrounding environment. Third condition is whether or not the proposed special land use will be served at a level of practicalities and not impose additional service demands upon the city by the applicant. The fourth condition, whether or not the proposed special land use will further enhance the public health, safety, welfare, and economic benefits and the municipal purposes and policies of the city. E, be consistent with the intent and purposes of this chapter and the objectives of the master plan, apply with all applicable state and federal laws. And then finally, the Planning Commission shall have the authority to require other studies and materials to be submitted, term compliance with the standards of this section, traffic impact studies, market studies, environmental assessments, leak capacity analysis at the expense of the applicant.
Through the chair, I, I think I would just recommend that maybe we include that in the report in the future, so you don't have to look it up on the dials.
Yeah, that would have been helpful to have.
It's in the PC report.
Oh, is it?
It is in the PC report, page five. Five of seven, the mine says five of seven and six of seven in the PC report.
Are there any more questions from council? If not, we would need a motion to proceed.
We're still on questions, right? Not debate?
Okay. You have no more questions? For, for staff or the applicant? All right, we would need a motion to proceed.
I move, after a properly-named public hearing and the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission, that City Council approve the special land use application of a standard restaurant with outdoor seating and drive-through facilities for 22132 Woodward Avenue, being parcel 24-25-34-254-045, based on plans dated May 3, 2023, and adopt the findings of the Planning Commission that they, the requested meets and satisfies the review standards set forth in 24-273 of zoning ordinance, subject to the following conditions listed in the packet.
Support. Moved by Pollocka, supported by Leaks May.
Oh, hold on. Oh, sorry. I think there's debate.
Yeah, let's have a discussion first. And I, I guess I'll start, since I'm the one lollygagging here. Candidly, I, I think I'm probably going to vote yes here, but I don't love it. You know, I, I think Sharon made a very good point, that we have lots of nice coffee venues in the city. I think the one that makes this a little different is that a, a lot of our spots are, are more convenient for walking up and staying in and sitting down and engaging. And this would be, you know, a drive-through, kind of a different experience altogether. Folks who want to go in and sit someplace are going to go to those places. People who just want to quit coffee on the road would go here. I think the thing that tips me in the direction of voting yes, even though I don't love it, is basically what you were saying, Councilman Pollocka, that, you know, another drive-through place could go in here. I actually kind of am glad that we're looking at a double line instead of just a regular drive-through, because we do want to minimize the impacts on Woodward. So I'm leaning toward yes, but with some reservations about the coffee oversaturation of the coffee market. But, you know, this has been a vacant property for a very long time. There's something to be said about activating it and cleaning it up and making it look better and, and having an option for residents and people passing through. I'm eager to see, hear what other folks have to say, if you've got strong opinions one way or the other.
Well, if I may, it has been a vacant property for two years, and I get questions all the time, when is the sandwich shop coming back? And the design of it really is, you mentioned trying to reduce the surface parking lot by putting in more greenery, but all I see is a footprint of traffic flow, and it's significant on that corner. And I know the reasons why we're doing it is to handle more of the high-peak demand times of coffee goers who are transient, traveling through, as there's really not many places to sit at the Caribou. And I like Caribou Coffee myself. But to me, the, the cons here cancel out the pros. And I, I don't love it. And just because our community has said they don't want more drive-throughs specifically in our master plan. And when you double the lanes, you create more traffic. You are literally inducing more traffic to go on a very small parcel. And since I've witnessed the Starbucks, as we all have, on Woodward and Royal Oak, and that is only one lane, right?
No.
Right? Our police cannot monitor Woodward at their peak times every day to make sure traffic is flowing and not blocking accessway into the street if more than, how many cars can sit there in one time?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I can't believe it's almost a parking lot. So, I don't know. I'm, I'm just... I know we have car-oriented focused businesses on Woodward, and, and I was like, okay, this is kind of between, close to the downtown and not as close as to our, you know, automotive district on Woodward. And so I went back and forth in my brain about that. But I landed on, this is really around a neighborhood. We've had other issues with more traffic when we've supported auto-focused businesses, and it's impacted the residents and neighborhoods. So I, I feel chili peppers, bringing up that term from a few years ago. I feel chili peppers on this one. And we have a lot more small entrepreneur coffee people. That sort of defines the uniqueness of our, of our town, even though I like Caribou and it's a corporate coffee. That's here and there. It has nothing to do with the special land use permit. That's Melanie's commentary.
Through the chair. Just keep in mind, it could become an Arby's.
Start that rumor. I appreciate the lightness you bring to this conversation. So, anyway, those are my comments at this time. We have a motion. Is there any more comments? I'll roll.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
McColsky?
Yes.
Tiana?
No.
All right, that passes four to one. Moving on to the consent agenda. Thank you. Applicant and Roger. Moving on to the consent agenda. I'm going to read it in its entirety, and council can decide what they would like to do. All right. 7A, approval of the May 2022, 2023 meeting minutes. 7B, approval of the contract with Tyler Technologies, formerly known as ARX Community Software, for the transparency dashboard software platform and services of fiscal year 2024. 7C, approval of payment for renewal dues to the Michigan Municipal League of $9,651. 7D, approval of Granicus contract renewal with closed captioning. 7E, approval of appointments for SACRA Board representative and alternate. 7F, approve the listed appointments and reappointments to city boards and commissions as submitted by the mayor. 7G, approval of annual contract with Davy Resource Group for Urban Forestry Services in the amount of $43,230. 7H, approval of the city for renewal participation in the Oakland County's Community Development Block Grant Program for years 2023, 24, 26. 7I, approval to extend contract with HydroCorp for the Commercial Cross Connection Control Program in the annual amount of $23,952. 7J, approval of the renewal of the Transportation Improvement Association membership in the amount of $8,142. 7K, approval of the 2023, 24 Fee Schedule Amendment. 7L, approval of the resolution recognizing Juneteenth National Independence Day. 7M, approval of the resolution to display the Juneteenth flag outside of City Hall. 7N, approval of the resolution honoring the life of Bart Starks. 7O, approval of the summer 2023 special assessments. 7P, consideration of the sale of city-owned property located at 2736 Horton Street. 7Q, approval to purchase three 2023 Dodge Durangros from Lonfontaine CDJR Lansing with accessories to be purchased installed by Canfield Equipment Service and Magic Graphics for $172,112, wait, $172,112.84 to be financed over four years with commercial Com, Com, oh my God, America Bank from account number as listed. 7R, approval of the set of MOUs establishing a series of free fitness programs to take place in various cities, parks, and authorization for the Parks and Rec Director to execute the agreement. And 7S, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the Finance Director and subject to review by the Council Finance Committee. What is the pleasure of council?
Your honor, I move to approve the items listed in the consent agenda as just read by yourself.
Moved by James and supported by McColsky.
James?
Yes.
McColsky.
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes. All right. That concludes consent, and we're moving on to the regular agenda. And we have three items tonight. And the first one is 8A, consideration to appoint the board members for the Citizens Police Advisory and Review Board. And who is introducing that tonight?
Through the chair. I will go ahead and introduce the process and then shift back over you to speak about your role. So City Council adopted the city's first community police advisory and review board ordinance, and, which established a new commission in February 2022, after long research and review and many drafts reviewed by the city's ordinance committee. After that adoption in March, staff developed the application and recruitment process, and in April, we opened up the application process. The application was put out to the public between April, the first week of April through May 18th, when it closed. Overall, we received 17 applications. I referred, or, I'm sorry, 16 applications. I referred those applications to the mayor. There are five seats on the board. So the mayor conducted interviews, and then I believe we have nominations this evening. We have two three-year terms, two two-year terms, and a one-year term per the ordinance that was adopted in February. And those appointments are listed in the packet. And mayor, I will talk, allow you to speak for the interview process.
Thank you. So we also extended the deadline so that we could get more applicants. I think we extended it by a week.
Two weeks.
We extended it by two weeks. At the original deadline, I believe we only had eight or nine people, and the extension brought in 50% more applicants and approximately, and I think the final total was 17, total applicants who wanted to volunteer. As for the process I've done with all of our boards and commissions and/or facilities, task force is really taking a look at the criteria of experience that we were looking for, which was listed in the ordinance. But we were looking for policing experience, social justice, restorative justice, diversity, equity, inclusion, lived experience, policing, as well as, and human resources slash union experience as well. And so when you take, and mental health. So a broad category, and out of the 17 applicants, there was a lot of overlap with certain criteria, particularly in, in mental health, and it was a very hard decision to make, to, to have a blend of experiences, expertise on the, on the board. So I work with all of the council members, and some of the, the candidates are, and if they know them, what they think, how would they function on the board, and that's kind of how it came up to the final nominees tonight. So thank you, City Council, for giving feedback on, on these candidates. And so I'm just really excited that everybody has stepped up, these five individuals who are going to help launch the inaugural CPAB board. So I know there's a couple here in the audience tonight, if you would like to come up and say hello. I invite you to do so now. But tonight, we are, on the slate of nominees is Mindy Couples, Dawn Wydman, sorry, Gregory Brown, Medhir Amwale, and Dr. Jeff Guber. So come on up and introduce yourselves, and we're just glad you're here.
Hi. I think most of the city council and the mayor know me. I've been in Ferndale for quite a while. My name's Mindy Couples. I live on Marshall Street, and I heard about this board coming to fruition about a year ago, and I was very interested from the beginning about getting involved in it, because I thought my experience in human resources and labor relations might assist with the board. So thank you for welcoming me to the board. I appreciate it, and I look forward to getting it started. Thanks.
Thank you. Mindy also attended our Police Citizens Academy, has been on the DDA board, but her expertise in unions and negotiations and things like that is really helpful to have. So thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Greg Brown. I am an applicant, of course. I am a full-time director at Rochester University, specifically for early college admissions. I am also a reserve patrol officer for the City of Hamtramck Police Department, with several years in law enforcement, including being serving as a PSO in the City of Westland. I have a degree in- I have a degree in human resources from the University of Phoenix, as well as I'm pursuing and almost complete with a master's in educational leadership. In addition to that, I have served in the K-12 setting as a school administrator for the past nine years, with majority of that being in restorative practice, PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Systems, as well as building connections, capturing kids' hearts, et cetera. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. I really appreciate you stepping up as chair and indicating that you wanted to be chair in your application. And so Mr. Brown will be helping lead this, but he has so much experience in understanding Robert's Rules of Order and local government meeting management. And I just really appreciate your expertise as well.
Hi. I'm Nadir Omwale. I'm a nine, almost 10-year resident of Ferndale. I am Director of International Marketing for Icon Pro Audio. I'm a musician and have served also on the inaugural Detroit Entertainment Commission several years ago. So, and I served on a police task force here at Ferndale a few years ago as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We're so glad that you're here as well with your experience of Ferndale and understanding history of our region.
So through the chair, I feel like Nadir underplayed his social justice background activism a little bit, so I wanted to highlight that as well.
Yes, thank you. Hello, Dawn.
Hi. Dawn Wydman. I'm a 30-year resident of Ferndale. I have 40 years of law enforcement experience, retired Detroit police officer, federal agent, retired with the Bureau. Currently, I'm investigator with the City of Detroit for ethics violations of all public servants. Academically, I have a master's in psychology, so I bring the mental health component to that, specialized in mentally ill criminal investigations. But I also have a juris doctorate, so I have enough to be dangerous, but not enough to qualify for anything. It got me into the FBI back in the day. And I'm looking forward to participating in this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Love that you're here, and your expertise is amazing as well. And combined altogether, I think they're going to be a really thoughtful, dedicated group to help propel some of policies and procedures and working with our police department for it. I have the utmost confidence in them, and I hope our police department will too. They're here to serve and represent our community.
Through the chair, I apologize. I failed to have our Human Resources Director, Dan Jaycee, just wave his hand to acknowledge himself. I've appointed Dan as the staff liaison to the board. So pending council approval, our staff liaison in our office will schedule a reach out, meaning to kick things off.
Excellent. All right, with that, I'll kick it over to council. You can pass a motion or...
I have no comment. I have no questions, but I do want to thank all the applicants that have applied and, of course, these individuals who have been selected to serve. Creating a board from scratch is not easy. You have a very, very difficult task ahead of you. You're creating the foundation of something very important for our community, so that's going to be no easy task. So I appreciate the time and energy that you're going to invest in this endeavor. So thank you very much.
Through the chair, I echo that appreciation. You know, it's intimidating being the first of its kind in Oakland County, but we do have peers, you know, as close as Ann Arbor. I actually work regularly with the outgoing chairperson of Ann Arbor's Independent Review Board. And if there's an opportunity to do so, you know, I'd be happy to connect her to the group and come and give a talk or something like that, to hear from someone who's done it before.
Excellent. And Dr. Jeff Guber was not able to be with us tonight, but that's okay. He will hopefully come and introduce himself when he can.
If I may, through the chair. When does this group finally meet? This is the first meeting.
I believe our city manager will be convening them to coordinate schedules. To find a mutually amenable date, probably July or August.
Yeah, through the chair, the staff liaison, we have to meet with the city clerk's office and review the meeting opportunities with the cadence of the other board and commissions. And, you know, we'll work through the chair. Begin with introductions and we'll go from there.
We're really designing around the needs and the availability of the members.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the appointments to the newly created Citizens Police Advisory and Review Board as submitted on behalf of the Mayor of Stark.
Support.
Moved by James and supported by Pollocka. I have one final comment, that the first slate year appointee date, like the first year of the terms, is different for the first year appointees. And then the first, so there's a couple board members who are three-year terms, two-year... So they're staggered terms, the three-year terms, two-year terms, and one-year term. And the one-year term, after they were renewed, automatically go to a three-year term. So that was a consensus-building staggered term to get support of all of council, to get this ordinance over the finish line, to make sure everybody felt comfortable with the direction of this board. All right. Roll call.
James.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
McColsky.
Yes.
Tiana.
Yes. Thank you. And we look forward to hearing about your work. All right, next up is eight B, is approval of the Department of Public Works to extend the contract with Ferndale's Downtown Development Authority for landscaping and maintenance services. Welcome, DPW Director Dan.
Hi. Good evening tonight, mayor and council. So the first thing that we have on the agenda tonight is the contract renewal with the Downtown Development Authority for landscaping and maintenance services. For the last oh, four and a half years or so, the Department of Public Works has entered into an agreement with the DDA to provide services such as weeding, flower planting, watering, kind of general maintenance of some of the assets down there, such as bike racks, things of that nature. So over the last few years, we've been kind of focusing in on the downtown area in partnership with the DDA to identify kind of areas to revamp. So for example, the area along the Wellington parking lot in Wellington, Wellington Street, the long brick wall, areas like that, that were kind of a bit overgrown. We've done, we've redone those and so on. So in addition to that, it also includes putting up all the holiday lights, taking all those down, and then just general assistance with the DDA and whatever they have going on at any given time, because they do have quite a bit going on. And then this contract renewals for one more year. This is the last extension on this current agreement that we do have in place with them. So at that point, you know, it would be sitting down and having a conversation or understanding what direction that the DDA wants to go in at that time. So virtually, this scope of work remains the same as in past years. The only difference is we have removed, we have removed snow removal services from this contract. That's largely in part to us not wanting to overpromise and underdeliver, because we will be having the addition of the bike lanes on Woodward. So it will be kind of a year for us to kind of learn how to most efficiently maintain those. So we need to just make sure that we have adequate bandwidth in order to do so. But that doesn't mean that we wouldn't, you know, assist if the DDA does choose to continue to provide those services, helping them out with RFP in order to kind of contract that stuff out and help manage that for them. We'll still be plowing all the parking bays, parking lots, that's something outside of this contract that we do for them. So the DDA had already approved this, the DDA board approved this contract extension at their May board meeting. So now we're here to bring it forward to city council for approval. And that's what we're here for tonight. So do you have any questions?
Through the chair, I just have a couple of, I think I know the answer, but I'm just double-checking anyway. So you mentioned that this is the last opportunity to extend the existing contract. Am I correct in my belief that there's most likely a desire to renegotiate a new contract? It's just something that needs to be updated every few years or so?
Yeah, so this is the last extension under the current agreement and scope of work. So if the DDA would like to, you know, move forward with Public Works continuing to provide kind of landscaping and maintenance within the Downtown Development Authority, Tiff District, we would definitely be open to having that conversation and taking a look at what that current scope of work looks like and going from there.
And then I think my only other question, maybe it's more of a comment actually, related to remove, removing the sidewalk removal, snow removal from the contract. I support the decision for the reasons that you stated, that, you know, that this year already has some changes to DPW's main job. So adding on to that right now is probably not a great decision. I'm curious, though, and this is not something that you can answer now, I'm sure, that if things go well this year with the changes on Woodward, it would be great to see more sidewalk snow removal downtown. And I would love it if DPW could get that contract, because it's more shared services with the DDA as opposed to contracting it out. So I guess I'm just offering that maybe with that contract renegotiation next year, maybe hopefully there will be the desire and ability to include that.
Yeah, it's definitely a conversation we're open to having after, you know, we get this first year under our belt. We still will be responsible for maintaining crosswalks, all the municipal sidewalk that is adjacent to municipal buildings, parking lots, and so on. It's just kind of everything else that we won't be focusing on.
Got you. Is this the second renewal? I mean, there've been two contracts, right? The third renewal? So this is the third?
Through the chair, I believe it's the third.
Third, okay. I think the DDA and DPW going in together on these services has been worthwhile. I was skeptical in the beginning. They did do a search for outside services as well and cost to provide those services. And the city said that it would be lower cost if we did it in-house. I'm still, at some point, think that there's going to be a capacity problem with the demands of services as our downtown grows and our budgets don't grow, particularly if the headley override renewal is not passed in 2024. I think some of your requests for snow removal will be answered. So some things to keep in mind of the budgeting process of next year. I won't be here for that. So, but I really appreciate, our downtown looks great, flower pots look great, and sidewalks are getting repaired. Now an improvement plan to make sure that we have sidewalk repair done every year, which was brought forth and led by DPW per Lena's storytelling of the value that the DPW is providing our downtown. So I see them out there all the time. And boy, have we needed them watering the plants in the last five weeks, keeping our downtown looking, looking good. So thank you.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, your comments prompted me to add one more thing. I think the DPW's impact on the plantings and landscaping has been patently obvious. I think the quality of the plantings and the maintenance of them, from what I understand, I think DPW staff have improved the ways in which they retain water and don't have to be, you know, watered and serviced as much as they did before. I hope I didn't just make that up. I'm pretty sure that's right.
You did not make that up.
So maintaining this contract, I think, is a, is a asset to our downtown. It just looks better.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Through the chair, I concur. I did want to make a point that some people may question why there isn't a figure amount in the motion that's going to be made. This was actually approved by the DDA board. Their, the expense actually comes out of the DDA account. It doesn't come out of the city's general fund account or through a maintenance account. So we're approving the contract that the DDA board has approved, and that's why this motion is going to be made. We're actually not paying out the money. The DDA is paying out the money, which is your money. But I just like the fact that it's staying within the city. You know, it's the DDA paying the city to do the work within the city. It's not going to some external company. We're investing in ourselves.
All right. Need a motion to proceed?
I move to approve the extension of the contract between the Department of Public Works and the Ferndale Downtown Development Authority for landscaping and maintenance services and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement.
Support. Moved by Pollocka and supported by McColsky.
Pollocka.
Yes.
McColsky. James.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Tiana.
Yes. All right. Next up is the final item on our agenda tonight, eight C, consideration of bid award to Rawhorn Electric for Hilton-Camborn street signal modernization.
Yes. So tonight, we have the bid award for the Hilton and Camborn signal modernization. That's the actual traffic signal itself. So what the city's been doing as part of the road bond issuance is upgrading all of the traffic signals throughout the city of Ferndale. Signals such as Inkresson West Nine Mile, Allen, Libranoy, Hilton, and East Nine Mile, and so on. So the last signal that we have to modernize is the traffic signal at Hilton and Camborn. And we want to get that work completed prior to the resurfacing project we have planned for Hilton between East Nine Mile and Woodward Heights coming in 2025. So as part of that, we put out to bid earlier this spring, the signal modernization work. We received two bids for that work. The low bid did come from Rawhorn to complete that work. We did receive positive references from them. We're bringing this forward right now based on the feedback we received in terms of lead times. So if awarded tonight, this work would likely not take place until fiscal year '25, which would actually be construction in the fall of 2024 due to long lead times on material. So basically, what we're doing at that intersection is removing the old wooden poles and putting up the steel mast arms that are painted black like you see elsewhere around town. The installation of those does provide a better geometry of the traffic signals themselves and basically where they have to be placed within the lanes and so on. In addition to that, that's, the signals are getting replaced, all the wiring and control boxes, and upgrading the crosswalk signals over there as well. So when the road bond was initially, the budget estimates were initially put together for that. At that time, the estimate to do this work in 2015 was $210,000. The low bid we received for this project was $386,000. So the offset in that would have to come out of major roads that we would have to make appropriate budget adjustments for between this fiscal year or fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25 in order to account for that, you know, largely driven by material and pricing increases over the last decade or so when that cost estimate was originally put together. So tonight, what we're requesting is a bid award to Rawhorn. So tonight, what we're requesting is a bid award to Rawhorn pending contract document approvals by the city attorney.
Amazing how expensive lights are.
If I may, through the chair. So Dan, with funds coming out of the major roads, that $176,000 coming out of the major roads, what takes a backseat because of that?
So what we'll be taking a look at, one is, we'll take a look at the equipment that we have budgeted in the next couple of fiscal years. Depending on what it is that we have to purchase, sometimes we finance, sometimes we just purchase outright. So it's making sure we take a look at that. And if we have to push some things down the road, then we have to push some things down the road. The other thing that we do take into account is some of the work that we do throughout town from a year-to-year basis, we also have the opportunity to submit for grant reimbursement on some of that work. For example, Open County Road Commission typically does a, kind of like a local match grant for some of the major roadway work that we do. So for example, this year, we'll be submitting for some reimbursement on the resurfacing work that we'll do on Bermuda, which will be approximately $58,000 that we'll receive back. So it's making sure that we continue to do that in those fiscal years and make sure that we're getting money back for what we're spending in terms of reimbursement and then just making sure that we're prioritizing appropriately. And then, in addition to that, it's making sure that as finance really gets on us, is really looking at our quarterly budget adjustments and understanding where we have funds that are maybe a bit over budgeted. For example, our winter maintenance account typically has a hefty budget that's allocated towards it each year. This year, we didn't expand that much in terms of salt usage. So like those accounts get adjusted accordingly. So, you know, you're saving $25,000, $30,000 that, you know, we're always planning to budget. We're quite conservative in those accounts that end up getting adjusted over time. So like I said, largely it'll come from budget adjustments and then just taking a look at where we're sitting. If we have to kind of push some equipment purchases for a year or so, it's not the end of the world. You know, making sure that we keep in line with the projects that we got coming down the road is the most important.
The chair, I have two points of curiosity. How many signals have we done? I noticed that this is the last one. And then what's the lifespan of these signals?
I have to, give me a second to count. Seven? Seven signals are our signals. So like the signals we see on Woodward are technically M dot traffic signals. So it's, the traffic signals that we have are the ones along Nine Mile are where the bulk of ours live, Hilton and Woodward Heights, Hilton and Service Drive at Ten Mile, and then...
Pinecrest?
Libranoy and Pinecrest ones, and then down, further down on Libranoy and Marshall. So we got those done. Typically, what lifespan we should see on these ones, we're looking like 20 years. That's for the entire structure itself. Over time, we may have to do some adjustments to the controllers themselves that operate everything. And that comes on a kind of a cyclical basis. And we get our assistance with that from Open County Road Commission. We contract with them for the maintenance of our signal or control boxes and the actual signals themselves. So we're looking at a couple decades before we were to have to go through and fully replace the signals that are up there right now.
Through the chair. Will this signal contain the, include the booming voice upon high that tells us when to walk and how many...
Wait.
Count, yes. Wait, wait.
Off the top of my head, I don't know if this has got the audible signal in it or not.
Okay. I feel sorry for the neighborhood.
I'd have to, I'd have to look into on that.
Daughter loves it.
She doesn't have to live by it.
Good for the people who can't see. We do have blind people in Ferndale.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Through the chair, Dan, a quick question on the contract. I'm sorry, I must have missed it, but is that price locked in if the work isn't going to be foreseelably done until fiscal '24? That's about 15 months. Is that a guaranteed price for 15 months?
Yeah.
Is there any language about cost escalations?
In terms of the cost escalation, I'd have to dig into the contract book, but I mean, us locking into this is locking into the unit pricing that was bid. The only terms of changes is if the contractor were to come 15 months down the road and file a claim for overages where, at that time, you know, based on what they bid and so on, you know, it's worth a conversation. But this is the, the pricing that the contractor bid in terms of unit pricing.
Thanks. Unit pricing is what I was asking about.
If I may, through the chair, Councilman Pollock, you made me think about something else. So will that then also include, I don't know what you call them, when you, the vibrations for you to touch the signals to know when to walk by, if you're hearing impaired? Will it, it also includes that?
I do not know that for sure.
All right. We need a motion proceed if we've exhausted our questioning.
I move to approve the bid award to Rawhorn Electric for Hilton-Camborn Signal Modernization at the amount of $386,610 in the expense to be charged to road bond capital outlay account number listed on the agenda and major roads capital outlay account number listed on the agenda and approve the Public Works Director to sign contract documents following approval of the city attorney.
I'm hearing a support?
Support.
Okay, thank you. Moved by James, supported by Pollock.
James?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
McCulkey?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes. All right. That passes unanimously. And that concludes our regular agenda, and we're moving on to call to council. And we start off with department updates led by the city manager, so I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Typically, Emmanuel would be here, but he's not available tonight. So in that spirit, I'm going to have Kara speak for Emmanuel so he keeps the streak of first going.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm trying to say that like he would say it. I don't know if I succeeded. Yeah, Parks and Rec staff is all busy tonight. They're in the heat of their busy season right now. I hear that they're putting in extra time coaching and, you know, working on sports and camps and things like that. So happy to speak up for them. First of all, he wanted me to mention that Gravity was this past Saturday at Gary Park. They partner with Reveal Productions to put that event on, and it was a huge success again this year. Beautiful, warm day. I heard nothing but wonderful feedback from those I know who went. The actual skate contest that they have, which is sponsored by Modern Skate and Surf, had 29 people sign up to be a part of it, and they put on a great show. They also, I guess, this year partnered with the YMCA so that they could offer some sports activities for younger kids who aren't a part of the skate contest. Mostly, they just wanted to say thanks to everybody for coming out and attending and also thanks so much to police, fire, DPW, and all the other city departments who helped and showed up and put on a great city support service. And then the other thing is that Parks and Rec is going to be hosting this Thursday night, the 15th pajama party movie night. That's going to be at Martin Road Park inside the Curling Club, starts at 5:30. That's for games. And then 7 o'clock is when the movie starts. The movie being featured is Puss in Boots, The Last Wish. I'm going to spare you all my Puss in Boots. You know what? Puss in Boots. There you go. It's late, and I just did it. I'm going to make my nieces watch this for me, really excited for me. So anyway, we crazy cat ladies love Puss in Boots. If you buy your tickets ahead of time on the website, they're $5. If you buy them at the door, it's $10. Your ticket includes popcorn, cotton candy, there's going to be a bounce house and games, all that stuff's included. They recommend that you bring lawn chairs, blankets, pillows, things like that. There's going to be other concessions available. So again, that's this Thursday. Family-friendly, everybody's welcome. I believe that's all I have.
Kara, you are the greatest living hero. Let's test, see who's watched it. I'm going to jump out of order because I want to personally welcome back Chief Emmy from a successful visit down to the FBI Academy in Quantico. Chief, welcome back, and you get ups next. Thanks for accommodating.
Comes back with a DM. Yes, it's, it was an eventful, fun, educational experience the last 10 weeks. I want to personally thank council, and it's a pleasure and an honor to be part of an organization that will invest this kind of time into developing their executives. So thank you personally. I can assure you that it was well worth it. And it is nice to measure your organization against organizations from across the country and across the world. It's an international program with some of the countries involved. They range from Spain to Germany to Taiwan to Cambodia to Ecuador to Thailand. And I'm going to forget, it's on there, Finland, India. So you can imagine the vast experience from around the world. And I can assure you that the challenges in the United States when it comes to law enforcement, almost to a person, the internationals thought it was a greater challenge to be in this profession in our country. So, but it was a very enlightening experience. But again, thank you. On PD business, we are starting to gather addresses and names for people who would like to host our street corner roundtable engagement sessions. Please reach out to myself or Officer Joe Maulmeister to arrange, to host. And it's, I can promise you, it's a light lift. We're just looking for a driveway or a corner. In the event, we do not receive people from our neighborhoods around the, no problem. We plan on hosting it in a neighborhood park, hopefully that maybe relieves some pressure and it's a great opportunity to showcase our parks. So that may be an option going into this year, in our, in this year's street corner roundtables. I, you know, in, in light of, back to the FBI Academy, I want to thank Captain Spelman for keeping the ship afloat in my absence. He did an incredible job wearing two hats, the hats of the executive office and the hats of the operations. I can promise you, it's, it's not easy. He did a fantastic job with very little guidance. So my hat's off to Captain Spelman and the rest of the Ferndale Police Department. And what was the last thing? I was thinking, I think that was about it. But anyway, it's a pleasure to be back. Oh, please, Community Advisory Board. I got to tell you, I am really excited. I am thoroughly impressed with the diverse background and incredible experience of this initial or inaugural board. I am incredibly optimistic and I look forward to working with them. So thank you, Mayor Joe, and the rest of the council for, I know it was a long time coming to finally get across the finish line, but we're, I think we're there. So I appreciate everybody's hard work. And again, thoroughly impressed with our candidates. So thank you for everybody's input.
Welcome back. It's good to see you again.
See you.
Thank you, Chief. And I'd have to acknowledge Captain Spelman stepped up quite a bit the last 90 days. So serving both roles isn't easy. So Captain, wherever you are, I'm sure you're snoozing right now. It's Monday, often well.
Show him the video later.
Next, I'll invite the DPW Director, Dana Tuskic, back up to just give a brief update on construction.
So construction is still going on around town and will remain that way for months to come this year. So Woodward is moving along quite well right now. The contractor is really focusing on doing repairs in the parking bays along the curb and the ADA sidewalk ramps. So that work will continue how it is for the next, probably at least like two or three weeks now into, into July before they start changing around traffic control a little bit and getting into some other phases of work. West Nine Mile with Oak Park, if you've been down there, you've seen that the contractor at the end of last week milled off the road surface. It will start doing some base repairs over there as we work through that project. Overall, that one's going along well, but the bulk of that work is not slated to fully be complete until about mid-August right now. And then our 2020...
I have one question about the Woodward.
Yep.
When do you think they're going to start grinding up the pavement? I know they're doing curb repair now, but when do you think they're going to move to the grinding of pavement, which is a much louder experience for people?
Probably sometime in the month of July, later July.
And then, are they repaving our entire road? Because when I go to Royal Oak, there are patches of pavement that they didn't actually redo. Have you been on them? They repave Woodward and Royal Oak, but there's like stretches of like the middle lane and here and there where they didn't repave them, and I don't understand it whatsoever. And I really hope we don't have that on our project.
Yeah, ours is a full curb-to-curb mill. It's, it's considered a maintenance project like Woodward through Royal Oak, but they're just kind of two different projects where that's more so just like a heavy maintenance project where they didn't have to mill and fill, they didn't mill and fill. Whereas through the Ferndale section of Woodward, that'll be a full mill and fill from our Eight Mile border up to our Pleasant Ridge border.
I know people will ask.
Yeah, through the chair, I think they did a, a full redo of Royal Oak-Woodward a couple of years back, and I think that's why it's just, instead of doing the little round patches, I think they've now figured out to actually do big sections of patches.
Yeah, but there's, there's parts of the road in those sections that are...
I know.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then 2023 paving is moving along well. We're moving into our third group of streets this week, so that'll be Bermuda, West Saratoga, Northway, Jane, Stratford, Alberta, and Edgewood, I want to say. So we'll be getting started on that. You will see it doesn't look like we're all done with the water main work on Buster. That's because our, our paving contractor in 2023 paving is also the paving subcontractor on our water main work. So we're waiting till we get moved in over there to button up the intersection. And there's also a couple of pavement patches that we have to do. That's why there's still some traffic control that's floating out there, but that'll get buttoned up here in the next few weeks as soon as our contractor gets into Bermuda. So overall, the construction projects are moving along really well. The lack of rain has made it a good production month for the month of May, so we'll see what June has in store.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Next, I'll invite our Finance Director, Phil Woodfield, up to give the fun reminder about summer tax bills, but also give a preview about the customer service improvement to this year's tax bills.
Gave it all away. This, this is the first of two reminders that your taxes are coming. July 1st, tax bills will be going out. But as Joe noted, in addition to what normally goes out, we are including an insert to break down your tax bill, kind of in the vein of Fern and Learn. We started there, and we're carrying it on through the inserts in the tax bill. So they'll get a, one, it's a two-sided. One side will actually have all of the descriptions as it always has been the last couple of years. The other side was a little more colorful and creative. I can only thank Kara for that is kind of showing where the dollar goes. So what you're getting for a dollar of your tax payments in Ferndale. So we think it'd catch on, because it did catch on with my less than creative dollar sample in Fern and Learn. Kara has much more creative skills in that area, so the one that they get in the mail inserts will be a lot brighter and more colorful than the one I created.
And does that include the entire? And does that include the entire full mills of all the taxing jurisdictions? Not just the breakdown of city taxes, right?
Yes.
All the schools and county and?
Yeah. That was it for me.
We will affirm the template for the summer bill and then repeat for the winter bill because that's a different, has different charges. More county.
Can you make sure you email that to council before it goes out in the bills?
We will.
Thank you. I have a feeling we'll get asked questions about it.
And I do believe that concludes your staff announcements, Mayor.
Excellent. All right, well, I'm going to start here on my left with Councilwoman Leaks May. If you have any updates.
Okay. First, I want to say that on June 19th, I believe it's this coming Monday, well, next Monday, we'll be celebrating Juneteenth right outside of City Hall. And if I'm not mistaken, the ceremony is at 7:30. Nisha? Six. Okay, all right. Well, we'll have some poetry reading from students and just to be able to celebrate all together the Juneteenth holiday. Also, I did find out also that our sister city, Hazel Park, will be having their ceremony the same day at noon at Hazel Park City Hall. So if you can attend that, I'm sure they would love that support. I have one more thing here. Sorry, just closed up on me. A resident reached out to me and wanted us to give acknowledgement to Girl Scout Troop 77540 who adopted the Zen Butterfly Garden at Harding Park, where they did weeding and planting and trying to spruce it up. So if you go by there, know that that's the work of our leaders in training. And just give them, if you see them out there, give them a shout out that you appreciate what they're doing because I hear they're making it look very beautiful. And I believe that Mayor, good job, great job on the CPAR board. So quite a vast experience levels, and I'm very impressed and excited to see what work they put together.
Well, I know you all contributed because you recommended people to fly. So thank you. I see it as a group effort and encouraging more people to fly.
And welcome back, Chief. All right, I am done.
Councilman Pollock?
Only thing I have is I want to thank everybody who came out to Ferndale Pride on June 3rd. It was an incredible day, a crispy day. Even if you had sunscreen on, it was still crispy. But it was great. We estimate over 25,000 people came through the city that day.
Is that the largest?
That's the largest, yeah. It was so, it was nonstop busy. From the minute that we opened, the streets were crowded. It was just unbelievable. And no issues. We, you know, we always plan for the worst and hope for the best. And so it was the best. It was really, really a great, a great day. So thank you, everybody who came out and celebrated. And I'm sure Julia Musical will be coming to a future meeting to share some more of the details. But they had their volunteer roundtable tonight to talk about what worked and what didn't work, so.
Retrospective.
Yes, the retrospective.
The retrospective. Thank you for all of your work on that.
Absolutely.
McCloskey?
I have one item tonight, and this was an interesting thing that was sent to me by a resident. I've never heard about this program before. It's called Meet Up and Eat Up. And it's through the Michigan Department of Education. It's officially known as a summer food service program. It provides free nutritious meals to children ages up to 18 living in low-income areas. Where 50% or more of the students qualify for free or reduced-price school meals. We actually have a location close to us. So over in Royal Oak Township, there's a location. And it is at the Tri-County Educational Center, 21131 Garden Lane, Ferndale, Michigan, 48220. And they offer both breakfast and lunch between 8:00 AM and 9:00 AM for breakfast, noon to 1:00 at lunch. And if you want to look at a map, there are locations all over the place that I had no idea about. If you want to look at the map, the website URL, the easiest way to get there is michigan.gov/meetup/eatup.
Interesting. I wonder if that's due to schools, you know, being out? So they're like summer programs for?
That's the need. And the program actually starts, so the very first day is June 26th of this year.
You know that, but that happens actually every year. Every year in the city. End of month, yeah.
Great. Since we have five Mondays in May, it doesn't seem like the Memorial Day Parade was between our last meeting and today, but it was. So I wanted to comment on, I thought the Memorial Day Parade this year was fantastic. I loved the new route. I don't know who's in charge of those decisions in the future, but I'm advocating for the shady route moving forward. And the memorial, the Ferndale Memorial Association emphasized in the program that follows the parade that they are literally meeting an existential crisis point in the existence of this organization. Many of the folks who've been a part of that organization for many years are retiring. And they desperately need new volunteers to step into their shoes and to keep this thing going. This is the longest consistently-running Memorial Day Parade in the state of Michigan. I think I said that right. And we don't want to lose those bragging rights. And from what I understand, it's not a huge lift to volunteer for this organization. There's lots of people willing to show up and do things like clean up the mall and plant the flowers and so forth. They just need some leaders to reach out and invite the folks and, you know, do some organizing and keep this thing rolling. So if you're a veteran, if you have a veteran in your family, if you support veterans, if you just love parades and memorials, this is the organization for you. And I urge you to check out ferndalememorial.org/getinvolved or just click the Get Involved button right on their homepage. Genuinely, truly consider volunteering your time to keep this going.